The pressure's on Kathy.
Doug, Pete, Doug's here.
Thank you. Okay, you can record if you're not already.
Recording in progress.
Got it.
Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the three November meeting of the Finance Committee. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I'm also going to, at the same time, open the pre-town meeting and public hearing for our upcoming Fall Town Meeting to be held on the eighth of November. The time for that meeting is at 6:30 PM at the Middle High School. Excuse me. What's the exact time? Ms. Kabiebo, would you tell us the exact time that the Fall Town Meeting commences?
Seven thirty. Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, thank you, and thank you. That's, we'll meet early like we typically do. And we'll amend that time as necessary. Okay, we're going to get right into the motions. Actually, I'll just briefly make a statement. There's a statement in the upfront in the Finance Committee report which details, which I drafted and provided to give a brief overview of what I thought were some of the more important or more, for a variety of reasons, they're all important, but there's a number of articles that I wanted to highlight. And so those are there. I'm not going to go into too much in depth in there, but I would ask, if folks would read that, and if there's any questions, certainly let us know. And then just for a point of business for the Finance Committee, if anybody is uncomfortable or going to choose not to attend the town meeting on the eighth, I would ask that they let me know via email or any way, any way that they can. Just let me know as soon as possible so that if we need to make any adjustments to responsibilities, that we have some time to do that. And that's all. So with that said, I'd like to get right into the reading of the, or the presentation of the articles. And so we'll start with Article One, unpaid bills.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Garzon.
So this article, number one, is an annual article that will fund the bills that were incurred in previous fiscal years, which have not been paid. In the Finance Committee report and the warrant, it lists what those bills were. They were for prior fiscal years, particularly fiscal year 2021, which ended on June 30th. And the total, I want to make sure I have it right because I'm looking at my notes. The total is $14,348.02.
Okay. So let me, I meant to, I'm in error, I should have mentioned this. So for pre-town meeting for tonight, we're really just going to synopsize the articles. We don't need to officially read the motions that have been presented to us. However, just for those that haven't done this before, and for those that may need a refresher, or maybe perhaps for me to remind me, because I haven't, I think I did Spring Town Meeting, but nonetheless, the standard, the way that we will proceed is obviously the meeting is controlled by the moderator. And the moderator controls that and will tell who gets to speak and who doesn't get to speak. But the traditional way that we'll go through it is essentially a motion will be made by the Finance Committee member that's been assigned an article. So then we'll designate prior to the meeting starting who is going to second. And that's really just administrative, so that we don't get six and seven people seconding the same article. It'll either be to the person's right or to the person's left. So it's, again, the motion, or the person who has the motion will say, "Madam Moderator." So everybody can hear it. There'll be, the script will be there. You'll know which article you have. Ms. Kabiebo will recognize the Finance Committee member, and that's your cue to read the motion verbatim, word for word, as it's crafted to us. For instance, in this packet, there could be some changes to this, but you'll have the exact motion and you read it. Then there's a second at the end of that. After that, the moderator will synopsize. They'll say, "There's been a motion," and a second. She'll say, "Discussion." And that is the cue for that same member who reads the motion to say, "Madam Moderator." And you'll get recognized again. And then you go into your discussion comments. Your discussion, as we've discussed several times, is to essentially lay out the salient points in the article, the salient discussion, anything that's pertinent can be pro or con, the issues that we discussed, the issues that we considered. Ultimately, lay it out so that the voters can have as much information as possible. And again, the person who's presenting the article should be generally in favor or a proponent, and they should be advocating for the way that the Finance Committee voted. Okay? And in most cases, I think in all cases, the person who's been assigned an article voted in the majority, so there shouldn't be any issues. If we had an opportunity, or if the case arises to have a minority report, we'll address that later, although the time is getting tight on that. But nonetheless, if there were to be a minority report, then we could deal with that in the secondary discussion or the second discussion comments. And in your comments, your discussion comments should be written, should have notes on it. You know, you can decide, you don't have to read verbatim, but you should be very well prepared and know exactly what you're going to say and what points you're going to make. And then finally, you want to close your discussion with the way that the Finance Committee voted. The Finance Committee recommended unanimously to recommend approval for the article, or whatever the vote was. And if you don't know what the vote was, please read through the minutes, or please send an email to Deidre, and she'll have the tally that she can help you with. Any questions on that? Once your discussion comments are done, again, it goes back to the moderator to control the discussion or to guide the discussion at town meeting with residents. Anybody there can, you know, more or less, it's at her discretion again, but anybody can make, add a comment or add a question. And then the moderator will decide, in most cases, who she wants to answer the question. It may be something that is asked for clarification, that the person who made the discussion and read the article, that it gets directed to them. Maybe it gets directed to a town official, maybe it gets directed to town attorney. Those are all things that the moderator will control that. So don't feel like you, now, you may be the most knowledgeable there, you should be. You should be close to the most knowledgeable person at that point about what the content and what the issues are on the article. But again, it's up to the moderator. So if you feel like you have the answer, jump out of your seat like you're in third grade, and at least just put your hand up, and she'll recognize you if she feels like the question should be directed your way. It's up to her. Okay? If you have a point to make as a resident of the town and not for the Finance Committee, you are more than free to get in line at a microphone and wait to be addressed. So there's nothing that keeps anybody here from having, voicing an opinion, asking a question, and engaging in discussion at town meeting. Okay? Any questions on any of that?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead.
Number four is the treatment plan. Lots of issues. I make my motion, then I make the little discussion that I have, and if there's any other questions, I feel it's appropriate to defer it to the DPW Director. I mean, I have a lot of the answers just based on, but I would, I don't know if the townspeople would rather hear from someone of his stature to answer this.
Well, I would defer, I'm sure, it's not up to me. I understand your point. Ms. Kabiebo is online, and I'm guessing she heard that. And I, again, defer to her discretion to make that call. Obviously, a technical issue, I would absolutely 100% agree with you. Don't sell yourself short. I watched your video this week. I thought it was great, and you know a lot about this topic, as well as your participation, being a former Select Board Member on the Enterprise Fund Committee. If there are legal issues, most legal issues always go to the town attorney. So I have full confidence that Ms. Kabiebo will make the right call. And if she calls on one of us and we don't know the answer, it is best not to opine if we don't know the answer. The answer is, "I don't know." And then that's back to her. Ms. Kabiebo, do you care to offer anything up?
I agree with everything you're saying. I mean, Kathy, from my perspective, the Finance Committee will do what they do. I would expect that the head of the DPW would speak on this. I would expect there's going to be members of the Board of Selectmen as well. And obviously, any technical questions would be much better addressed by him. But I do think you have a real breadth of knowledge here, and I'm sure people want to hear what you have to say, and it has a lot of gravitas. So, you know, I will let the conversation continue, and I think that, based on the questions people have, I would be very surprised if the Director of the DPW doesn't play a major role in this discussion, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McKay, would you, we'll get to you in one second. Mr. McKay, would you care to shake your head north or south, or make a comment while we're discussing this?
Whatever's asked me, I'll be there in as much information that I have and research to let the public know what they're voting $6 million on is yes.
So for those of you that are on Zoom, I don't suspect you can hear him, but he's available, he's willing, he's able, and he's aware that people, he's anticipating that people will want to know what $6 million is going to. And I think we're prepared to discuss it. Ms. Harden. Wherever you'd like. But just speak right up into it, because our Zoom audience has said that the masks mask the sound.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk.
Bring it closer to you.
I just want to ask that the members of the committee and the moderator give my office a copy of your prepared statements after the meeting. Doesn't have to be, I'm not expecting verbatim, you know, you can change it during the meeting, but what, it would help us, because we're going to, we have to do the minutes, and we'll be going with the video, but it's sometimes difficult to really hear everything. So it'd be helpful in terms of figuring out what people actually said. If you have something prepared, if you're doing it all off the top of your head, which I hope you're not, that's one thing. But if you have something written out after the meeting sometime, like right after or within the next week, if you could just give it to my office, I'd really appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
All set. Hold on one minute. All set.
I think so, unless somebody has a question.
No, I think, no, I think that Deidre already has all that information, so she could forward it to you. Because we already.
You probably have to ask her to do that.
Absolutely. Deidre, could you send that?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So my opinion on this is typically, I don't turn over personal notes, and I don't think personal notes necessarily have to be part of the public record. So Deidre will be taking minutes as she notes, as she always does, and the things that are said. And we certainly will cooperate and clarify in any spot necessary for the Town Clerk's office. So you definitely will get, any help that you need, we'll work through Deidre. Okay? Okay.
I actually take the minutes for the town meeting. I just take it for the finance, I mean, if you'd like me to, I can, but I was told long ago that the Town Clerk's Office does that. So I actually don't post them. I post meeting minutes from your meeting prior to town meeting.
Okay. Well, I want you to keep doing what you've been doing. And if there's any clarification or questions from the Town Clerk's Office, we'll work together, and we'll make sure that there's an accurate record of the proceedings. Personal minutes, personal notes are personal notes. And not that they're obviously of the topic at hand, but they're just that, they're notes. And they shouldn't, in my opinion, my notes will not be part of the public record. I'll have chicken scratch and all kinds of things all over them, and I'm not sharing them.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just figure out whether I'll be taking minutes from town meeting or the Town Clerk's Office.
Okay, well, we'll work that out. We don't need to work that out now, but.
It's already set in stone.
Understood.
The Town Clerk's Office does the minutes for the town meeting.
Yep.
So we're responsible for doing it. If you don't want to give me anything that you're prerogative.
Let me clarify.
I will be, you know, going through whatever you say, though.
Right, absolutely. And if you need clarification on what's on the video or the recording, and hey, what did you say here? Let me know.
Okay.
And let any of us know. Let me know, and I'll get the answer for you. I'm not saying that I'm not going to cooperate. I'm just not sharing my personal handwritten notes or typed notes. That's me personally. Ms. Boyardi.
I'm confused. We had to write out a script as far as what we were going to present during the meeting. So we kind of have what our article is, what it involves, what we're going to ask the moderator to do, how we explain it, and then how we, whether it's approved or not. So why would we not want the Town Clerk to know what our thoughts were? I don't understand that.
You may share whatever you want, Joyce. I'm opting, my personal decision is, I'm not sharing my personal notes. It's not a public, but personal notes are not part of the public record. If you want to share your notes, or if anybody else wants to.
No, I'm not trying to be antagonistic. I'm trying to ask, what's the difference since we had to write these, for them not to be aware of what we are going to present that day, since we already have our script? It's the script I'm talking about. I'm not talking about.
We're getting way bogged down. You didn't have to write anything in particular, other than synopses that are right here up front in the Finance Committee report. After that, what you say during your discussion, your discussion comments, you are highly encouraged to write something down so that you're prepared and not speaking extemporaneously. But in my opinion, you don't have to share that.
Okay.
I absolutely will encourage and make sure that we work with the Town Clerk to make sure that the Town Clerk's Office is able to provide an accurate record of the proceedings of town meeting. So, all right, enough said on that. Okay. So any further comments on Article One? Article Two.
So Article Two, I will preface by saying, I actually did not vote for the amended article, but I am the one presenting it. I have no problem presenting the article that is different than the way that I voted. So just making that note, this article is requesting the transfer of $50,000 from free cash to increase the fire repair fund, and $15,000 to fund various changes to positions due to an approved SEIU collective bargaining agreement. In addition, funds for various programs and staffing, including $60,000 for a new townwide social worker, are requested totaling $244,478 from marijuana impact fees earned in previous years. Finally, this article authorizes the transfer of $214,000 from water enterprise receipts for the water tank maintenance. What the Finance Committee will be recommending approval, and the motion that we make at town meeting will be an amended article that would transfer $184,778 from marijuana impact fees, which would exclude $60,000 for the new position of a townwide social worker. But otherwise, the Finance Committee is recommending approval of all the other items in Article Two.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kabiebo.
I just want to be clear, the motion made that you guys are making will be the amended motion, not what is in the, so you will be reading this article and taking the $60,000 out of it as you present it as the motion.
The motion has been, already been amended, so it is, it is not an amended. It is not.
Because my understanding is.
Hold on one second.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hold on one second, please. It is not an amended motion. It is, the motion that is presented is the Finance Committee's motion. It is not, we amended it during our proceedings, it is now the motion. It is not an amended motion as it's presented at Fall Town Meeting. And I could be wrong on that, but my assertion, until I'm corrected, is that this is the motion. The motions are by the FinCom. It may not be consistent with the warrant, but we are offering an alternative, by the way, which is likely to get discussed here in the next minute or two. Please correct me if I'm wrong, because I just want to make sure we have that understanding.
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand that as well, that's my point. Because I want to make it clear that if what you're putting in front of us is a motion, then in order for that 60 to get put back in, somebody would have to amend your motion.
I think that that will.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just making sure I understand.
I think that will likely get clarified during the discussion by Ms. Garzon.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Just from the point of view of process, I agree with the town, with the moderator, and you, the main motion is in order, assuming it is consistent with, but not identical to, the warrant article. So when you're describing the main motion, which would exclude this number, that is a legitimate main motion, and to put the money back into the article would require an amendment.
I understand that if it were to get voted to the article, the way that the article is written, that an amendment would be required. But honestly, it is up to Town Council and Ms. Kabiebo to decide how the motion gets presented. But as it's written right now, it is consistent with how the FinCom voted last week.
Correct.
Two weeks ago.
I'm not sure I agree with that. I think the main motion comes from the Finance Committee.
And Mr. Chairman, that is my understanding as well. The main motion comes from the Finance Committee, so that is what is being put on the floor and seconded. So if it needs to be changed, if somebody wants to add that back in, they're going to need to make an amendment to add the 60 back in and bring the money back to how the warrant article reads.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, that's all.
Okay, Ms. Gilmore. This, or Mr. Gazinski, the article that we have in front of us, excuse me, the motion that we have in front of us reads per the vote that was done by the Finance Committee two weeks ago.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I? Sorry for not being there in person this evening, but I've been a little under the weather, but I'm trying to recoup, so I will plan on certainly being there on Monday evening. Yes, the motion that you have, I modified the motion and resubmitted that to Deidre earlier today. The motion is in line with the vote taken by the Finance Committee, so the motion is the adjusted motion that excludes the townwide social worker.
And there lies the rub. The opinion of Mr. McCaffrey and Ms. Kabiebo is that it should not be written that way, and it should be written per the original warrant article, which in which case.
Mr. Chair, no, that's not.
Standby, hold on, please, please don't interrupt. So just for, so we can be clear, that perhaps the motion should be written in the original text, consistent with the warrant, and we should show that we voted it down, and then an amendment should be made to amend it to the funding that we voted for. All of this could be moot, because we could be revoting this, I don't know. I'm not, we haven't crossed that bridge yet, but Mr. Gazinski, please clarify as to whether the motion, the package that we have in front of us, which is consistent with the vote that the FinCom took two weeks ago, removing the $60,000, is that the motion that we should initially present during Fall Town Meeting?
Yes, it is. So the motion, as stated by the moderator, and the former moderator did outline that the motion that goes before the town meeting is the motion as voted by the Finance Committee. So the motion as, the motion as I amended it and resubmitted it to the Finance Committee for your consideration is in line with your vote, and that, in my opinion, and my understanding in my history of town meetings, is how it should be actually made. And if someone wants to put that position back into the article, they would be required to make a motion to amend, to add that item back in.
Ms. Kabiebo.
And that's exactly what I think Jim and I were both saying. We are not questioning the Finance Committee's motion. The Finance Committee took a vote, they are making the motion, it will be seconded, and it will be on the floor. But people are going to be looking at the article in their warrant, which is as it was printed.
Right.
And they want that to match, they will have to make an amendment. And I will make that clear.
Correct.
Come to that point. But I just want to make clear that the main motion will sound, and sometimes it always does at town meeting, but not, this is a rather significant difference. Usually, it's a funding change or some small amount. This is a rather big change, and people are going to be, you know, very much notice that this reads differently than what's been put in front of it.
Okay. So the only, I have a understanding, I'm seeing eye to eye with how you're discussing it, and I believe.
I can't hear the chair over there.
And I believe Ms. Garzon has an understanding, and will address it in her discussion as well. Okay?
Mr. Chair, and those issues that have been brought up are exactly what I'm trying to highlight in the discussion, that our motion excludes that $60,000, and then, you know, when we move to discussion, it will be, the article reads this way, but our motion excludes the $60,000.
Thank you.
And what the Finance Committee is recommending is approval of the article minus the $60,000 social worker. It may still be confusing to folks, and I'm sure there will still be questions, but that is that distinction that I'm trying to make, and I think we're all on the same page on that at this point.
Ms. Boyardi.
My, I was just hoping that perhaps, and only because, I'm sorry, can you hear me I know we voted this a couple weeks ago, not to include the $60,000. But after having spoken to several teachers outside of this community, only because I happen to know them, they were talking about the impact that COVID and the impact that has been made on children, and the need for extra services has been increased. I'm wondering if perhaps this is one of those blurbs that happened, it got put into this and got sent to people, maybe it should have stayed there. But I'm hoping that we could amend it so that the $60,000 for a townwide social worker could be implemented back into the article. I'm second thinking about it after speaking to people who are in the profession, in the school profession. This was originally proposed by the school committee. I don't know that they presented it so well that we understood, but being on the sideline and speaking to educators, I think it's important that we put this back into the system. So I'm hoping that we can, because it has been put into the warrant for people to see, that perhaps we could keep it there. Just my thought.
The only thing I'm going to add is that we discussed this extensively. The final vote, two weeks ago, on this article, and Deidre, please correct me if I'm wrong, was five to four against, as it was originally crafted, with the social worker included, five to four. I am not opposed, I'm not strenuously opposed to revoting it, I'm not in favor of revoting it either, me personally. I will allow it if that's what the Finance, if that's what the committee members want to do, that would take a motion and a vote.
I motion that we implement the school townwide, the townwide social worker that the school department has requested.
Seconded.
Thank you.
So I would like to just clarify, Mr. Underhill, I probably, maybe should have done it before he seconded, but I'd like to clarify that the motion is to reopen discuss- done it before he seconded, but I'd like to clarify that the motion is to reopen discussion on this article, and then if there's an amendment to be made, we'll take an amendment. It's kind of, it's procedural, but I want to make sure that we have, you know, everybody knows what we're doing and we get through it, you know, with some sort of purpose. So Joyce, would you please remake your motion that we reopen discussion on Article 2?
I move that we reopen discussion on Article 2 in reference to the townwide social worker for $60,000.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that the Finance Committee reopen Article 2 for discussion and potentially for a revote. All those in favor will go through in order. Mr. Berube, yea. Ms. Garzon?
Yea.
Mr. Riley?
Nay.
Ms. Boyardi?
Yea.
Mr. Borgman, absent. Ms. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Reyes?
Yea.
Mr. Stedman?
No.
And Mr. Underhill?
Yea.
So it's five yays to three nays. So I'll take a motion.
I motion that we accept the townwide social worker for $60,000 and put it back into the warrant for Article Number 2.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, and ultimately, I understand your motion, your motion is to put that back in, so really what that amounts to is that we would go back to the original motion, and I would ask that you...
Certainly, so that would be, my request is to implement the townwide social worker at $60,000, which would move it back from $184,780 back to $244,0478. I can't say it right.
Second?
Seconded.
Discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Chair. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Riley?
So if that's in there, could we, do we have now, could we get some detail on who this person is going to report to, who their supervisor is, what percentage of their time is going to be spent working, essentially working for the school versus working for the town at large, and who's going to keep track of that? And is that going to be, I understand the money's coming, presumably this is coming from marijuana money, so it's really, it's really the town's money. But it's also being proposed as a townwide social worker, but it was proposed by the school, so I still feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of mixed responsibility, accountability, and in the whole position, it sounds very undefined.
Mr. Riley, I think the quick answer to your question is no. There will be no answers to that particular question in terms of defining the roles, the hours, the responsibilities tonight. There's nobody here on the meeting that I'm aware of that has the capacity to either answer that or the authority to answer that. I will go back to my original comments, that I think part of the flaw in this particular article is the way that it's presented. The columns say the department, but department for what? Department for control and authority and supervision and allocation and prioritization of the resource. I recommended, but at the time, my recommendation was that we seek to remove that column, and, you know, those details, which I don't dispute are important, could be worked out, and it's, there's time to work them out. They don't, we don't, the Select Board and the Town Administrator and the school, and frankly, and in my opinion, the Board of Health, who should be in control of a townwide social worker, you know, that could be resolved prior to hiring a social worker. But that's not going to happen tonight. It's in the warrant, it lists the department, and it also has contradictory or vague language to say a townwide social worker, and I think those were all valid points two weeks ago, unfortunately. One of the, I'll just bring up another issue, not necessarily in response to your question, but if there is a need for social workers for COVID, I'm sure that the town has COVID resources available that it could use to hire them via CARES funding or other, you know, other calls for funding, state and federal funding, that is probably available. I don't, I'm not making that point in the sense that I have a belief that just because something is being funded out of host community impact funds, that that's all that that resource is going to be used for. I don't think that the social worker should close his or her door if they get a COVID case and somebody needs help. But the majority of, I think we've already justified that the requirement is valid due to the impact of retail marijuana sales in the town. But again, if there are resources available for COVID, and I believe that there are and that there will be more, then the town has the ability to handle the concern that Ms. Boyardi voiced from the people that she spoke to. I think it's a valid requirement all along. I voted, I think I spoke out for it, but at the same time, when the vote came, I actually think I voted against it, or voted with it, with the motion that the Finance Committee made. You know, I'm on the fence on this one, because I feel like that $60,000 in impact funds is going to be there in the spring. The money doesn't go away, we have time to get this right, and that's ultimately how I voted two weeks ago. I can't tell you how I'm going to vote right now.
So that was actually going to be my follow-up question, since we've now reopened this and reinserted that money based on comments regarding the need for more social services to help with COVID-related issues, what does the town currently have for COVID resources that have not been spent?
Ms. Johnson.
And wouldn't that be an equally reasonable source of funds if it's more specific to the need? Because otherwise, it sounds, it still sounds to me like...
Mr. Riley?
Yes?
I've asked Ms. Johnson to come to the table to address that question.
As far as the CARES Act, we were notified by the state that all of our essential spending had to have occurred by October 29th, even though the funding goes through December 31st. And so when we do our next submission, which is December 3rd, we have to have all of that money reported. We have very little left, if any, so there wouldn't be anything in this CARES Act round that we would have to be able to fund a social worker. As more money becomes available by the federal government, maybe that's something that could be looked into at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McGinnis, yes.
Kathy McGinnis. I can appreciate what other districts, the issues that they have. At no time did anyone that came within the superintendent or principal mention that there were issues with COVID in Milis, and all I've heard from my good friend Joyce Boyardi was that the out-of-town teachers that she spoke to mentioned about a COVID issue, what it's wreaking havoc within the school system. This is specific to marijuana issues, how they affect residents of Milis. I don't think anyone on this committee, any nine of us disagreed with the need for a social worker, Mr. Chair. The disagreement was there was too many questions about who, when, where, why, where is it going to go, non-school year, could you come back in the spring and give us, give the Finance Committee a better understanding where the hours are going to go for this? And I don't see any issue with doing it then. What's happening now, Mr. Chair, is the muddling here going on, and I would respectfully request that this motion be withdrawn. Thank you.
Any more, yes, Mr. Stedman?
I agree with what Mr. Riley and Ms. McGinnis had to say. Ms. Mariardi, I think COVID has placed a real psychological toll on a lot of families, and a lot of very young students are feeling the effect of that. But this is a marijuana impact fund, so I don't see how the COVID justifies putting this back in. As much as it's been said, we all see a need for a social worker in the town, I don't think this is the appropriate place to fund it, and I don't think it's really defined well enough how it's going to benefit the whole community as opposed to just the school. So I stand with my position to take this out of the warrant.
Any last comments before we vote on the motion? And Mr. Underhill, see your hand, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to refresh my memory, this position was voted for and approved by the Finance Committee during the spring, before the Spring Town Meeting. Is that correct? With this position?
I don't recall, I don't recall, it certainly was discussed, and I don't recall the motion or the article if it was voted and funded. I'd have to do some research.
Okay, but my point is, this position has been around since the Spring Town Meeting, and from my understanding, none of these concerns have been brought up since the Spring Town Meeting. Additionally, no other concerns for these other funded positions under Article 2 have been brought up. No one's asking what our Chief of Police is going to do with the school resource officer's time. We have faith in our officials to utilize the time of their employees effectively, just as our Chief of Police will be able to for the school resource officer. We have to have faith that the Select Board, the Board of Health, and the School Board will be able to utilize the social worker for everyone's benefit for the town. While we may have questions, and we may have valid ones, we do have to have some faith that our town officials will be able to fix this issue.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Boyardi?
Sorry.
Just one last thing. I agree with you, Mr. Underhill. And our, if I really go down to the deep roots and what our town is all about and what our human race is all about, our children, the impact it makes on them, our children are our future, and I really was, the information that was provided to me really changed my opinion about what, and originally I was like, nope, nope, nope. But after speaking to people and seeing how even their own children, who are, these are teachers who have children, and how their children are impacted, I just thought, you know, for one year, this would be a good choice.
Okay. Ms. McGinnis?
I'd just like to remind members that these were never, these items were never officially discussed at Spring Town Meeting. They were discussed before Town Meeting, and there was an issue about the funding availability, there wasn't that many funds that would be known. Perhaps Ms. Johnson could clarify the exact amounts that were in the spring, and then there was a statement that in the Fall Town Meeting, there would be more money, and it was never, the needs were never, to the best of my, I might have missed a meeting, but I haven't missed any, were that the funds were not there at the time, and that it would be off until the fall. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm going to stop discussion on this, and I'm going to take it to a vote, and I'm just going to make one more comment, because I really do think the issues here are between those of us that feel it's a compelling need, and alongside of those, it's not mutually exclusive, those of us that could feel that the way that the article's presented in terms of saying it's a school social worker, but it's a townwide social worker, there's a, it's incongruent, and whether or not that can be worked out. We've said it, I think we've all had our chance to speak, and I want to vote on it and move on, so the...
Mr. Chair, could you just remind us how the Select Board voted on, did they vote on this on Monday?
Mr. Gazinski?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I, well, they, I believe they were supportive of all the articles in the warrant, but I don't, I don't believe they actually specifically voted to change this, the Finance Committee's, go past the Finance Committee's vote and recommend something else. They did discuss this at length at their meeting. We met with the superintendent of schools, and the Select Board was supportive of having this item addressed and voted upon at the Spring Town Meeting. But I don't want to speak for the board, I know that the vice chair of the Select Board is online, so she may have recollection.
Sure, thank you. We did, we didn't take specific votes, because putting everything on the warrant as we did was, in a sense, supporting everything that went on the warrant. We did have the superintendent come in and speak to us, and he did give a better picture of what the intent of the position would be, but admittedly, there, the specifics that has been discussed in this committee that you're looking for have not been defined. So that piece is accurate. He did speak about what the social services would be, or what it would assist with in terms of students, he gave some statistics. He did talk about how this position could be very flexible, working with elderly services, veteran services, where this, you know, we do have these different categories in town already, but this person could be another resource to help out. So it was a good presentation, and it certainly sounds worthy, but those specific questions you guys have been asking have not been answered yet. So the way we kind of left it is if they want to work this out and get those answers, we could revisit this in the spring.
Thank you. I'm going to take it to a vote, I'm going to make one last comment, and then that is, I'm going to be voting no against the original amendment for the social worker. And the reason for that is because I don't believe that there's an urgent and compelling need for this. I don't think there's a public health crisis due to marijuana sales in town, and I think there's time to get this right, one way or another. We had a chance to get it right since spring, we didn't, and we have another six months, in my opinion, to get it right. I don't, I think there is a need, let's get it right. So with that said, Mr. Berube, no. Ms. Garzon?
No.
Mr. Riley?
Can we clarify what we're voting on?
We're voting on the original, the original article as presented two weeks ago with the social worker included, so it's plus up $60,000 from HCA funds. Mr. Riley?
No.
Ms. Boyardi?
Yes.
Mr. Borgman is not here. Ms. McGinnis?
No.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Stedman?
No.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
So the, the original article that we just revoked fails... Five to three. Deirdre, did you have five to three?
I did, yes.
So now I'm going to need an amended motion.
The amended motion would be...
Ms. Garzon?
I don't believe we do need an amended motion, because this was a motion to amend the motion, and that failed, so the motion stands.
Thank you. That's why we keep you around, Jody.
No problem.
No problem.
I can stack them for you, Jody, I'm right here.
Could you do the revote because we thought it was four to four?
It's five to three. The, the, uh, our clerk has it five to three, and, um-
Well-
We'll redo our vote, it's fine.
Uh, motion fails. The motion was presented to include it, and the vote was three yes and five no. So the motion-
Okay, thank you. We thought, the two of us thought it was four to four.
I have no votes from myself, Ms. Garzon, Mr. Riley, Ms. McGinnis, and Mr. Stedman.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one question on that, uh, article.
Yes.
Uh, what's required to approve it? It doesn't say, in, in what I see here, whether it's, uh, two-thirds or majority?
It's a majority vote. It's, um-
It's a majority vote.
Yeah, it's on the top of the next page.
Oh, okay, just the way the-
No, that's an excellent question. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Article Three. Article Three is the capital items. The capital items, there are fourteen items listed. They were all considered by the Capital Planning Committee, which presented its recommendation on urgency, um, or criticality of the need of the projects that were, um, presented to us. Um, I'm a member of that committee, um, along with, uh, there's a representative from the School Committee, there's a representative from the Select Board, and then there's some members at large, including, um, uh, Mr. McCaffrey, as well as, uh, Mr. Corcoran, and Mr. Barry is the Chair of the Committee. Uh, we rank ordered all of the projects that were, um, essentially asked for, for funding during this cycle. There was not a, uh, not a consideration made for the dollar value of the project. It was just on face value. How bad does the town need it? What does it serve? Does it serve the community in a positive way? Is it, does the funding go to correct a life, uh, health and safety issue? Is it compatible or consistent with the town's master plan or comprehensive plan or some other sub-plan? And, and, and a number of other factors like that. And so the projects were scored. They were considered, uh, again, presented to the, the Select Board for inclusion, uh, in spending, uh, whether they were, depending on funding source, but mainly from free cash. So you can see the fourteen projects there totaling five hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, for the, and for the most part, that would be funded from free cash, um, but there are some enterprise, sewer enterprise funds as well. Incidentally, there are two other projects that were also considered, um, and, and will be voted on during Fall Town Meeting, but they are of such dollar value that they will be separate articles likely because they'll be funded through lending of some sort. And we'll get to those, um, subsequently tonight. The Finance Committee, uh, voted and recommended unanimously to recommend the article for approval by Town Meeting. That's Article Three.
And you're presenting that?
And I am presenting that, and then I'll do it a little bit better than that.
No, no, I just want to write it down.
Nope. Article Four.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate fifty, uh, five point six million dollars to pay costs of making water treatment plant improvements at the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant to address excessive levels of PFAS identified in Wells One and Two, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Eight, Prens Four, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town. Therefore, all or any portion of the borrowing authorized by this vote may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The Select Board is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state or federal aid that is or may become available for these purposes, and the total amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any federal or state grants received on account of this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty. Let me take up the General Laws out. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Okay. Um, and just to make sure, we, um, state how with committee voted on that, and we voted unanimously to approve, to recommend. Okay, any questions? Article Three or Four before we move to Article Five? Okay. Article Five.
Mr. Chair, that's my article. I do have a question, um, about, are we supposed to be giving a summary, or are we actually reading the entire article?
Whichever you're comfortable with. It, it, you know, this is good practice, so I-
To help from stuttering.
It's good practice, and I don't mind either way. I just want to get us through this before ten o'clock tonight.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
No worries.
Article Five, um, this article will appropriate three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a new ambulance for the fire department. Um, Ambulance A1 is a two thousand seven with a hundred and forty thousand miles. The last two inspections have noted frame of body rot as an increasing concern. In the past, we've replaced ambulances every ten years. This one has lasted fifteen years. A new ambulance will take two hundred and eighty-five days from the date of order, so if approved today or now, we will not receive the new ambulance until approximately August of 2022. I didn't write down, but if I do remember correctly, the Finance Committee did vote unanimously, unanimously to approve.
We did. Any, uh, questions, comments, or recommendations for Mr. Underhill in his discussion? None heard. Thank you. Article Six. And Article Six is me. Okay. So the Article Six is for funding for, uh, the new fire engine, which is to replace, uh, Engine One, and Chief, um, Barrett has been in and described this to numerous committees, uh, this committee, the Capital Planning Committee. Essentially, our, uh, Engine One is a backup to, um, his frontline engine, and when, when his frontline engine goes in for repairs, he ends up putting this, uh, thirty-something year old engine on the road. It is not roadworthy. It has failed numerous, uh, inspections. It is unsafe, and it is time for a replacement. It is in his capital plan, and he has forecasted this replacement. And much like the ambulance, there is a, I think, four hundred and thirty-seven or four hundred and eighty-seven day lead time on this. So appropriation for funding at this time, which will come via lending, which the, uh, the town, um, Finance Department will figure out the best way, the most economical way, whether it's short-term lending, long-term lending, or packaging it with some other way, some other lending, um, you know, that this engine, if approved, if appropriated, um, wouldn't even materialize for about a year and a half. And, um, so that's a long way to limp along the engine that, uh, you know, the, the back engine one. So it would require, because of that lending, it would require two-thirds vote, and the Finance Committee recommended approval of this unanimously. Any questions on Article Six? Article Seven?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, Article Seven is to see if the town will vote to approve the increasing the senior work tax program amount from thirteen hundred and fifty dollars each year to fifteen hundred dollars each year in order to meet the new state minimum wage increase.
Okay. Any questions, comments, recommendations for Sarah? Okay. Article Eight.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Underhill?
Um, Article Eight will, if approved, will amend Article One, Section One, seven point one B of the town stormwater regulations by setting bottom floor elevations at a minimum of two feet above seasonal high groundwater elevation. This element was proposed by the Board of Health after consulting with construction contractors in town. This articles will make future construction less likely to flood in town by avoiding groundwater by not digging into it. This is proposed to be tied to the stormwater bylaw so that it would only be considered if development requires an acre or more of land disturbance. An average single-family home on a standalone lot or building addition would not, most likely not trip this requirement. Um, this was not, this was approved by the Finance Committee, but not unanimously.
I should know this, and I don't, and I'm not afraid to say it. Jody, uh, perhaps you could help me. When an article at Town Meeting requires two-thirds vote, which is what this says, and I'm not sure exactly why it would require two-thirds vote-
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gazinski?
Mr. Chair? Yes, that's actually a typo. That should be majority vote, and we will get that changed. It's not a zoning bylaw, so it does not require a two-thirds vote.
Okay. And so thus, our vote that we took a couple of weeks ago, so really, my question was, was going to be, does the Finance Committee vote have to mirror what, whatever is most appropriate, whatever it says in the town warrant? In other words, if it's two-thirds at Town Meeting, it's two-thirds in the committee vote? That's my question.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, my understanding is that is not the case. We are voting on motions. We're not voting on the warrant because that is a power that resides solely in Town Meeting.
Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Gazinski, thank you. Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Underhill?
I have two things.
I'm sorry, thank you, go ahead.
I believe the vote on this was five to four.
It was.
Uh, you had discussed doing a minority report. Uh, do you have any further thoughts on that, Mr. Chair?
I don't intend to.
Thank you.
I would welcome somebody else, but I don't intend to.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Your court.
Mr. Underhill?
Just a procedural question. Um, when we say how the Finance Committee voted, should we give the actual vote or just say it was approved but not unanimously? What, what's the preference for that?
No, you, it's, uh, first off, it's public record, so if anybody wanted to look into it, um, to determine who voted how, they could watch the videos. I just want to keep it simple. State the vote. It was five to four, or if it, you know. The only, really, if it's, if it's, I would just be generic and accurate, is what I would say is the bottom line.
So then, um, I had, I'm sorry, I have a question. So then, on, um, the article list, should I, um, list how the-
No.
Committee, no.
Dieter, you should do it, how you've always done it, and, uh, perhaps after this Town Meeting, we'll look at that. I mean, I'm taking notes, and I am recording. Really, the only reason I'm doing it is because I need to know who to call on. We're doing roll call votes. We're doing it in person in Zoom, so I need to know who, who's next up. But I don't think that's totally necessary, um, so I would say no. And if, and if the committee wants to change that, uh, at a later time, we'll discuss it at a later time.
I don't think we, Mr. Chair, I don't think we've ever said-
Nobody can hear you, but-
No one can hear you, too.
I'm sorry. I don't think we've ever in the past said how we voted when we go to Town Meeting.
No. No, we don't. So that's what, you know, back to, to Mr. Underhill's question, I would just be generic and, and above all, accurate.
To say that the Finance Committee voted and recommend this article?
Yep.
Right.
Okay. Uh, I think we're on to Article Nine. Doug?
Okay. Uh, I'm going to guess that nobody really wants me to read this whole thing. I have a question for Donna, though, as far as how we go through this. So we're going to do this by section, and you're going to vote on each section individually before we go on to the next one?
Hmm, correct.
Okay, so what I have in here is, uh, Select Board composition, Town Clerk, and Town Administrator. Those would be the three main issues for discussion and vote. Is that right?
I'm seeing it more as Article Four Two than Article Two. Article Three, the executive branch. Article Three, powers of appointment. And then we get to Section Four, this is where I would actually like to break Section Four into each subsection. The only reason I'm a little bit hesitant with that is that number one under Section Three dash four, which is a separate point than the two subsections below it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a way to break it down to present, and, I mean, I, I mean, I, I can just read, just go through it piece by piece and just read every single one, and, you know, I mean, I don't know that we want to go through and read A through R. My, uh, my thinking on the Town Administrator section was for me to, you know, state what it's doing, and then, uh, basically point out the, you know, the parts that are different than current practice. Some of the things that are in here are things that are already sort of in existence. We're just putting them, we're just officially putting them in the charter. There are also some issues that grant certain new authority, um, to the Town Administrator, uh, and so I, my, my objective there was really just to try to point out the, sort of the two different pieces of it. The, the granting of new authority, uh, and then the sort of codification of existing practice.
Okay, and, and that's fine. I, we had a conversation with Town Council, and I'm going to make it clear at the beginning of the meeting that we're going to be approaching Article Nine differently, so people will be prepared for that. Um, I'm also going to stress, and I want to stress it here as well, that amendments really do need to be in writing. If people are planning on amending anything, whether it's this or anything else, they should come to Town Meeting prepared with that in writing. I mean, I not, I know that some of this happens on the fly, but with something this important, I would think people, I would hope that people have given it some thought, and if they do plan on making a motion to amend, that they come with that prepared. Um, and I would, I would highly recommend that they have a conversation with the Town Clerk's Office about that process and to make sure that they're bringing it forward correctly. I really need to think a little bit more about Section Three dash four, the Town Administrator piece, partly because of that first header. Otherwise, it would be perfectly natural to break it into the two subsections.
I'm going to, can I ask you, uh, can I interject here real quick?
Yep.
So I'm just going to state that, Doug, I think that your, obviously, the article or the motion needs to be written in the, in the sequence along with the milestones that the moderator plans on voting them.
Right.
And I would ask that, I think it'd be prudent for, um, the moderator to provide you that outline, and you just craft your discussion along those lines. Now, if you have questions and concerns, you should ask those and have them addressed, but I would, again, defer sequence and, and operation and kind of the mechanics of the Town Vote to the moderator, who I know has worked with the Town Attorney and, and likely the Town Administrator to, to get that where they think it's going to be most successful. Um, and then you follow suit with your discussion, um, and, and then we just need to make sure that the motions are drafted up accordingly. I don't want to, um, work that out here.
Right. Okay, well, yeah, so based on previous discussions, I was looking at this as sort of treating each of these sections as articles in themselves. So the process would apply as though there were multiple articles, but why don't I simply try to give a quick summary, uh, for now so we can get through this tonight, um, you know, without reading every last detail? So, uh, the, the Article Nine proposes amendments to the Millis Town Charter. Uh, there are several different sections in here and several different, uh, amendments proposed. Uh, these amendments were submitted by the Select Board, uh, on the recommendations provided by the Charter Review Committee, who met, uh, more than dozen times over eighteen months, uh, and interviewed, uh, nearly a dozen people, um, and had numerous discussions on these different matters. interviewed nearly a dozen people and had numerous discussions on these different matters. So, I, if this is out of order, Donna, I apologize just how I have it written down on my, on my, on my paper. Key, key thing to keep in mind regarding Charter amendment is that if this warrant article passes in whole or in part or amended, then the, the article as amended would go to the state legislature, and they would be voting on a special act to ratify an amended charter. If that passed through the legislature, that would then make the new amended charter effective. Key items within the proposals for amending the charter include a change in the composition of the Select Board. It is proposed that the Select Board be expanded from three members to five members. And in, in order to smooth transition in the first year, one of the new members would be elected to a two-year term and one to a three-year term, with subsequent elections all being three-year terms, as is currently in practice. There are a number of reasons that were proposed, that were given for expanding this. I, I won't go into detail on those. I'm going to list a couple of them or so at town meeting. I think the biggest one, from my perspective, is just that the, the time demands on elected members to the Select Board is only increasing over time as the complexity of running the town just grows with regulations and all kinds of other issues. And so adding those resources would be, would be helpful. Another proposal is to change the method for filling the position of the Town Clerk. That would be changed from elected to appointed. That would place the Town Clerk under the supervision of the Town Administrator, excuse me, Chief Administrative Officer. There's a lot of pros and cons to this. I think this has been, gone back and forth for a long time. Some key considerations were independence versus accountability and availability. Surveying surrounding towns show that there's a broad mix of whether or not that position is filled by election or, or by being appointed. It's, it varies across the state. Another significant piece of the amendment deals with the Town Administrator, one aspect being that the Town Administrator will be henceforth referred to as the Chief Administrative Officer. And then there are a number of changes within Sections 3, 4, and 3, 5 of the, of the Charter that deal with the duties and responsibilities of the now, now TA, potentially Chief Administrative Officer. Those sort of boil down to both formalizing existing practices and, and putting them, you know, directly in the Charter, but there also are some new authorities granted. So, under Subsection 1, Powers and Duties, at present, the Town Administrator appoints the Chief of Police, Fire Chief, and Director, subject to approval by the Select Board. This would make the Select Board the appointing authority for those three positions. Similarly, under Subsection C, the Town Administrator would be, be able to appoint pretty much all other department heads and officers that do not have any other method of selection in the Charter. And that appointment would become effective fifteen days after, after the appointment, provided the Select Board does not vote to reject that appointment. That's different in the sense that now the Select Board is actively, is required to actively vote to ratify. So this sort of turns, turns it from being something where the Select Board has to act in order to make an appointment effective to having that appointment become effective if the, if the Select Board simply does not act. There's a provision in here under H that the Town Administrator will be responsible for the maintenance, repair, and use of town land and buildings which fall under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. I had asked Mike for some help in getting some more detail on this, and I may actually need to talk to him a little bit more to get clarification on this, but this is strengthening the ability of the Town Administrator to grant use of town land and buildings without Select Board approval. I think some, a little bit of extra detail would be helpful for me on that, Mike, so we can circle back on that. And then, the, there's a, there's a provision that the Town Administrator would have the right to attend and speak at any public meeting of any multiple-member body, exclusive of executive sessions. That is new. And finally, for highlights, the Subsection R would give the Town Administrator the authority to approve payroll and expense warrants. Currently, payroll and expenses, that authority rests with the Select Board. And according to the current Charter, the Select Board cannot delegate that authority. So in order for the Town Administrator to, to have the authority to approve payroll and such, this Charter change would be required to make that, to put that into effect. There, there are some other, you know, there are some other aspects to the, to the changes in here under the Town Administrator. If anybody feels that there's something that they really think I should be highlighting, by all means, let me know. I, I just, I didn't feel like, I didn't feel like every single one of these subsections needed to be, you know, fully fleshed out. If it really, if it, if it didn't, if it didn't grant a new authority and, and didn't really materially change what is currently, you know, what's currently the case, then I felt that simply referring to it as formalizing in writing in the Charter what is already functionally happening was, was sufficient, but I can also be disabused of that notion.
Mr. Riley.
Yes, sir.
My, I, I agree, you don't need, I wouldn't recommend that you go through every facet of the proposed changes or new language. I would ask or recommend that you be prepared to talk a little bit of the background of how this came about, why it's coming about, when somebody could anticipate it coming about again in terms of timeline, and the, why it's compelling to do this now, that type of thing. Some of the background issues, and I don't want you to discuss it now, that's not what I'm suggesting, but.
Yeah, I, I had, I had written that in, Mr. Chair. And I, I had a little more detail on that. I mean, I certainly want to acknowledge the committee members, and, you know, to your point, actually, I believe by Charter, or it could be by bylaw, but I think it's in the Charter, that the Select Board is supposed to be, supposed to be appointing a Charter Review Board no, no less than every ten years. So I think we were overdue.
Anyway, if you would just comment on that and then talk about the process going forward to, you know, where does it go from here? I'm sure if you don't, likely Ms. Kabiebo will, but again, one of you ought. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Riley? Ms. Harden.
Lisa Harden, Town Clerk. I have a question on the procedure that's being followed here, where you're saying the town meeting is going to vote to petition the Mass General Court to amend the Town and Millis Charter. In our current Charter, it gives, it says how it's gonna be amended, and specifically it says, any amendments to the number of the Board of Selectmen may be proposed only by a Charter Commission elected in accordance with the general laws, which we have not done. So, and the other amendments can be proposed, as we've done, and voted at, by two-thirds town meeting, and then they're supposed to be put on the town ballot and passed by a majority vote. So I am curious how the town is just bypassing what's in our Charter and going some totally new route, just because, I don't know, the Board of Selectmen want to do that? I mean, that's illegal.
Mr. Gazinski, Mr. Gazinski, could you please?
Yes, sir.
Discuss a little bit about the, the town, the, the voted portion of the Commission or the Committee to, to make changes potentially to the Select Board composition? I think that's, that's the particular issue that Ms. Harden just brought up.
And the part about it not then being voted on at a town.
Well, that's, that's the part that I just asked Mr.
No, the whole thing.
Riley to discuss in his comments, but I would like to hear from Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's certainly a valid question. We, we did research that matter with Town Council because of that language, as to the possibility of whether a special act going through the legislature would, would, would meet the requirements under law with the Charter, even with that language. And Town Council reviewed it carefully. He spoke with the attorneys up at the Attorney General's Office in the Municipal Law Unit, and they had advised him that the special act could accomplish those changes, even though that language occurs in our current Charter. So that, that is the opinion of Council, which has been backed up by officials at the State Attorney General's Office.
I guess my question would then be, why did you choose to do that way instead of letting the townspeople have their say? In a two-part process.
That would be a question for the Select Board. I mean, I don't want to speak for them. I mean, there was, there was a number of options to move forward on a change. Certainly, they could go through with it through a full Charter Commission or through a special act. They weighed, they weighed all the aspects of that, and they decided to go with the special act route. But I would probably defer that to the Board if, if you'd like to discuss that with the Select Board at one of their upcoming meetings.
Okay, Mr.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I know, Mr. McCaffrey.
Mr. McCaffrey, go ahead.
Yes.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'd like to follow up on that.
Sir, hold on one second. I'm not looking to debate this issue, and I think Mr. Gazinski's guidance right there as to if there's an issue as to why something was done, it doesn't rest in this committee, it rests with the Select Board. And given that Mr. McCaffrey was on the Select Board at, at that time, or I'll let him, I'll give him some deference, but I'm not gonna debate, have this debate here in this committee. So, Mr. McCaffrey, sir, thank you.
Well, my question, Mr. Chairman, is the Finance Committee did vote to support the article as written, which means that the Finance Committee has taken the position that this method of amendment is the one that we should follow. So I guess from my perspective, I'm not asking why the Select Board presented it this way, I'm asking why the Finance Committee believes that we should follow a process that is not consistent with what the Charter provides.
Touche, and sir, that question has been asked, and the answer that Mr. Gazinski just provided is that answer, so.
I know, Mr. Chair, if I might, I know you don't want to reinvent the wheel here, but with all due respect, Mr. McCaffrey, the Finance Committee was not aware that the Charter read that there should be a warrant review committee voted, a voted committee. And to me, that would make more, personally, that would make more sense than rather, than having a group appointed by the Select Board. I did not know. Thank you.
Okay. Any, Ms. Harden, any more questions? Okay. Any more guidance, discussion, recommendations for Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stedman.
My comment is, I, your, your comments are thorough, and they address all the issues. I'm not sure you'll keep everybody's attention going through that.
That's always, that's always, that's always the challenge, and that's why they always give me these types of articles, because.
That's actually true.
I can yell, I can yell really loudly.
Yeah, I think the.
Mr. Chair, if I may just say one quick thing, I know you don't want to beat this to death, but I did go through Mr. Gazinski with a very specific question, which I CC'd you on regarding Chapter 43b, Section 10, which is what our current Charter refers to regarding the process. And the, the feedback was essentially that, well, that, that is a method, it is not the only method. And so there are options available for affecting a Charter change that exist, and, and it's, it's not necessarily true that the only way that it can be done. And if you, I think the language is where it comes in. I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, I might be able to talk to one, but it, it, the point, the point being is that it is, there's more than one way to do this.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stedman.
I have two other things. One is a simple question, will Article 2 be voted on separate, changing the name of this committee?
Ms. Kabiebo, did you hear the question?
I did hear the question, Mr. Chair. At this point in time, I do plan on voting Article 2 legislative branch Finance Committee as a separate item.
Thank you. Second question. If, if Article 4-2 is turned down, does not get the two-thirds vote, who will be making the amendment to Section 3, Article 4, Subsection 1, to amend, amend it, to delete the Town Clerk from the positions approved by the Select Board? Who, who, will anybody be prepared to make that amendment? Because it would need, need to be done to be consistent.
Mr. Riley, I nominate you. Thank you, sir, and excellent point.
Good question.
Okay, any more discussion, questions, comments? Moving on, Article 10, Article 10.
Okey-dokey, that would be me. So, Article 10, this is a, this is a, a transfer of funds from free cash of $40,000 for the tree trimming and removal. This has been an ongoing, going procedure. The town tree warden has been diligently earmarking trees that pose a danger to the community, and some will be removed, others will have their limbs trimmed. This has been an ongoing, this has been ongoing to help the roads and the citizens' safety. So this has been something that we've approved, this will be coming from free cash.
Okay, how did we vote?
I don't, I believe it was a unanimous vote.
Okay. Dieter, you, do you have that vote handy?
I'm, I'm trying to look it up right now.
Okay. I believe there's, while you're, while you're doing that, I believe there is somebody on Zoom that has a question on Article 10, Mr. Schneider?
Yes, hello, Mr. Chairman, this is Nathan Schneider, 69 Acorn Street. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Great, yes, but thank you, everybody, for all your work, really appreciate it. I just had a question, last year at the, at the Springtown meeting, we also voted for $40,000 for tree work and pruning.
Yes.
And it's my understanding from talking to the tree warden that only $20,000 actually ended up being set aside in the bud. ended up being set aside in the budget. I was just curious where the other 20,000 went.
Mr. Schneider, I owe you an apology. I did answer, initially answer your email inquiry and told you I would get back to you. I forwarded your inquiry to the town budget director, finance director, and she provided me with data in which I have not forwarded to you. So I will do that, and hopefully that will answer your question. It is fairly in-depth. There have been numerous appropriations made for tree pruning over the last several years. She has provided me with data to that effect. In general, I don't think that the statement that you just relayed to us, that perhaps was told to you, is, I don't want to say it's not accurate, I just don't, it's not 100% accurate. There was $40,000 appropriated. Now, whether that money has all been spent, or whether some of it went for one budget year, or a different budget year, or a different tree trimming cycle, hopefully the data that I provide to you will answer that question. And then, if you have follow-up questions, you certainly are free to come back to this committee, or go to Ms. Johnston, who is the expert on where virtually every penny that's spent in the town budget goes, and how it's executed. Is that sufficient?
Sure, sure. I would definitely love to see more information. I think the term that Brutus shared with me was, part of the money, maybe that 20,000, was ceded, and I'm not sure if the town understands that, or it would be helpful to know. Because I know last year, it was specifically called out for Farm Street, Acorn Street, and this year's Article ten, it's more vague, it's more generic, so, you know, the average town person wouldn't really know where it's going anyway, but I just was curious to know exactly.
Yep.
Because, you know, I saw all the heavy equipment get unloaded one morning, and since I work from home, it never came up and down Acorn Street. So I'm just curious if Acorn Street is still on the list for next year, or what?
I'd be very surprised if any article for tree pruning and tree trimming specified the streets to which those funds were to be used. I don't recall, having been on this committee for several years, I don't recall there ever being a vote on specific streets. But nonetheless, we owe you an answer, and between myself and Ms. Johnston, we'll get you the specifics that you're looking for.
And my apologies for not knowing about this quest.
Thank you. Okay, any more?
The committee voted on a seven to two on this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Seven to two.
You're welcome.
There being no further questions or comments on Article ten, we'll move to Article eleven. And I'll do Article eleven. So this article moves from free cash, seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, to last year's snow budget. And snow and ice removal, snow and ice control is the only budget line that gets to run in deficit, but then once it does that, and once, the reason is fairly obvious, it's unpredictable in nature, and even though we've added to that budget in past years as a straight-line item and up to that budget annually, we don't necessarily always get it right. It's obviously weather-dependent, and it's not straight-line on inches of snow, it's on events, it's on price of commodities like salt, et cetera. So this year, the finance committee recommends approval of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars being moved to snow and ice control for last year's budget. Any questions or comments? None heard? We'll go to Article twelve.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stedman. Yep.
This article will fund the unemployment insurance fund. Total cost is twenty, to be funded is $25,000. The town sets an amount that they, a goal for what the balance in this account should be, and they need $25,000 to bring it up to the, to that amount. The finance committee recommended approval of this unanimously.
Okay. Any questions for Article twelve, or recommendations for John? None heard? Article thirteen.
This article would appropriate $7,300 for required OPEB actuarial analysis. That's other post-employment benefits other than pension. This has to be done every other year, and because it's biannual, it's not included in the annual budget, and has to be voted on at this meeting. Finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Any questions? My only comment is this feels like it's a bit of a passing of the guard, given that Jody has done this for the last, like, five or six years. So congratulations.
I'm sorry, Jody.
I did it last year.
No worries.
Sorry, sorry. I'm not totally keeping track. All right. Anyway. Okay. None heard? Article fourteen, Sarah.
Mr. Chair. Article fourteen would establish a chapter forty-one, section one-eleven F, injury leave indemnity fund. This article is only requesting that this fund be established, but it is not requesting that any funds be appropriated at this time. This fund will be used as a reserve fund in order to pay police officers and firefighters who have sustained injuries in the performance of their duties at a base rate, as well as related shift coverage during the period of their injury leave, instead of appropriating these funds from the police or fire department's operating budget. The current average annual amount for paid injury leave and milice is $96,000, and the finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Okay. Sarah, my only comment would be to, when you say, I think you said 96,000, $96,000 annually, I think, or maybe it's per individual, I'm not sure. My guess is.
No, it's, yeah, annual, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem, no apology necessary. And the other thing I would mention is that police and firefighters are reimbursed at 100%, which is a bit different than, say, somebody on workers' comp, I think, which is like 60, 65%. I could be wrong on the 60, 65, but I believe I'm right on the 100. So I would just maybe, maybe mention that.
I do, and Mike was kind enough to give me that information, because, you know, other than police and fire, people do usually get only 60% of their salaries. I wasn't aware of that police and fire do get 100%.
Yep. Thank you very much. Any more questions, comments for Sarah?
Lauren has a question.
Oh, who?
Hi, hi, everybody. I was just going to, I was just going to ask if any of this is covered. I blocked my camera, sorry. I was just going to ask if any of this is covered by insurance, why there's a need for a separate fund.
And I actually, I asked Mike that same exact question, and the insurance company only pays up to $1,000 a week for each week that that employee is out of work, and sometimes $1,000 does not cover the full employee's salary, and they also have to pay for shift coverage so another employee can take over that shift. And so the remainder of the funds that would be needed would come out of this special reserve fund as opposed to the police and firefighter operating budget. But at this time now, they're not asking for funding, they're just asking to establish the fund.
I would just think that this would be a good example through the chair of a future examination of cost-benefit, because if we have insurance that barely covers what the need is, maybe it's less expensive to raise the threshold of our insurance coverage rather than to have to do a dollar-for-dollar transfer of funds into this new finance vehicle. Because, yeah, $1,000 a week isn't going to do very much. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I think it's actually, it's an excellent point. I don't think it should stand away, stand in the way of establishing the fund, but I definitely think it's all questions to be asked and answered prior to funding the fund. And I'm not sure what the timeline is for funding the fund, likely, you know, the next operating year or cycle. And I ask that we would all remember that, and perhaps, Mr. Kozinski, that there could and should be a cost analysis of how much more premium does it cost to get the, you know, the $96,000 annual in benefits or payout necessary? So, anyway, please stick that in your notes, and thank you, Ms. Barnes. Any further questions? Okay, we're on the homestretch. Joyce.
Yes. This article is to rescind the following approved but unissued debt authorizations. $96,000 for Article thirty-three of the spring annual town meeting of five, twelve, fourteen for the Water Street Pump Station sewer design. $28,000 for Article twenty-five of the spring, spring annual town meeting of May, oh nine, sixteen for the street sweeper, and 11,800 for Article twenty-nine of the Springtown meeting of oh five, thirteen, thirteen for water systems improvement, the chlorine contact loop. These were monies that were approved to be borrowed, but were not, the amount was not necessary, so we're just rescinding the authorization. These are not available funds for any other use, it's just that they were, the amount that was requested was a higher amount than was needed.
Any questions for Joyce? Okay, excellent. Any questions in general on, that will basically end up being a wrap for Fall Town Meeting? We do have a bit of other business that we'll go into, so, but before we do that, any last questions on Fall Town Meeting, the motions, the articles, et cetera? Okay, so none heard? That will conclude the, I'll close the pre-town meeting, that portion of the public hearing, and then we're going to get into some other agenda items, and then wrap this up. Okay, so, one of the items that we need to vote on is a bill, and I'll take a motion. Kathy, I'm going to put you on the spot. Thank you.
All right. I make a motion that the finance committee approve a bill in the sum of $4,745 for our town publishing, for publishing the, mailing 200 of the office, official copies of the finance committee report.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that the committee vote to approve the expenditure for the finance committee report for Fall Town Meeting, and the amount of $4,745. Discussion. None heard? Let's vote. Pete, yes. Jody?
Yes.
Doug? We'll come back to Doug. Joyce?
Yes.
Jim is not here. Kathy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Stedman?
Yes.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
Are you awake yet, Doug?
I was talking, I just didn't realize that I was muted.
And your vote is?
Si, senor.
Thank you. Gracias. Yes, okay. Passes unanimously, so we will sign, please.
Unanimously from the FinCom. Whoa.
Wow.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Way to go, way to go. Okay, moving on to minutes. So we have two minutes, two different meeting minutes for consideration. I will take a motion on the sixth October.
I move that we accept the minutes written for the sixth of October.
It's been moved and seconded that the finance committee vote to approve minutes as written on, for our meeting on sixth October. Mr. Berube, yes. Ms. Garzon?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Boyardi?
Yes.
Mr. Borgman's not here. Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Stedman?
Yes.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. I'll take a motion on the October twentieth meeting minutes.
I move that we accept the October twentieth meetings as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the committee vote to approve the meeting minutes as written for our meeting on October twentieth. Miss, discussion. None heard? We'll vote. Mr. Berube, yes. Ms. Garzon?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Boyardi?
Yes.
Mr. Borgman not here. Ms. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Stedman?
Yes.
Mr. Underhill?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that wraps up meeting minutes. I skipped over old business, new business. Anybody have any old business, new business that we owe?
Oh, Mike.
Deirdre, I have one thing of old business, and then I'll turn it over to you. Please make sure, please, please, please make sure that in our, we will have a meeting after Fall Town Meeting, and in that next agenda, I need to make sure that you put on subcommittee assignments. We have that information, we just haven't had the time or attention span to discuss it. That's okay. Additionally, I just want to let you all know that there likely is to be a tri-board meeting on or about the fifteenth of November. So you, please just kind of pencil that on your calendars. There is a notional agenda that I've discussed with, excuse me, Mr., why is his name escaping me? The select board chair. Peter Germaine, thank you very much. I'm very sorry. It's late. Anyway, we've discussed a draft agenda. We'll publish that once we discuss it with this, we have presented it to the school board as well to get their topics, and it'll be published, it'll be an official meeting, as you should expect. So please just pencil that in for the fifteenth for now.
What time?
Don't know, probably evening, evening time. Yep, yep. Okay.
Will this be a Zoom, Mr. Chair?
My, I will, it's not my call, but I will fight to have it to be both. I would like for us to do both until we can, until we can open up town buildings and have them, you know, without Zoom at all, but nonetheless.
It's an important public issue, is my reason, not to, so that we can hear from home, but if there's any board that should be, people should learn about, it's this one.
Thank you. The, Deirdre, the next meeting says that we're going to meet on Monday at 6:30 prior to Fall Town Meeting, on this Monday, the coming Monday, the eighth. And my question to you and to the committee is, do we need to be present an hour earlier? Can, will 45 minutes or a half hour suffice?
That's entirely up to you. I just, I wanted the meeting posted, just so you could.
Yep.
But I certainly can change it to seven o'clock, if you'd like.
Well, I certainly want us to be prepared, but I want to make sure we're using good use of volunteer time, and I don't think there are many issues. Everything is recommended, or, you know, not, we have recommendations for everything on the warrant. Sometimes in the past, we've had to vote, recommend at-town meeting. I don't think there are any of those issues. So I'm leaning to saying that we would show up one half hour early, just to take roll call and open the meeting, and take care of any administrative items. Unless anybody has any objections, or if I'm missing something, let me know, but, Deirdre, how about a half hour early?
Sure, that's fine. I just posted it, just to make sure an evening was posted.
You're keeping us honest, I appreciate it. I just, you know, one less, giving you a half hour back as well, Deirdre, so everybody gets a half hour of their time back, so.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stedman?
As a newbie, what is the appropriate dress?
So, you have nothing to worry about. I certainly will, there is no appropriate dress. It's personal preference. You want to wear Hawaiian gear and, you know, board shorts and a tank top, feel free.
Okay, thank you.
It's personal preference, I'll just leave it at that. I would tell you, tradition, tradition has been, for men, the sport coat. We always debate tie, no tie. I'll wear a tie. I always, I look, I hold an esteem, and he's not here, so I can, I'll say this, I would always try to match whatever Mr. McCaffrey's wearing.
Tough.
Yeah, tough guy. He's got a, anyway, he's got an eye for fashion, but, anyway. Anyway, any more questions? And for the ladies, I don't know, I, you know.
Business casual.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Garzon?
I, I would.
Ms. Garzon?
I, I would like to note that it does get rather hot under the lights unless they have been upgraded from, you know, whatever they are. Feels like halogen. So, you know, I've been in there in a November town meeting and, and been comfortable in a sleeveless top. So just dress accordingly. Don't dress for winter is, is my recommendation. Layers are your friend. And for women, skirts can be a challenge because you're up on a stage and we don't always have, you know, anything in front of us.
Yeah, bunting, bunting on the table.
I'm just going to put that out there because this is, it can be pretty uncomfortable for four hours up on a stage. So, you know, we don't know how long the meeting will go. So just be prepared to, to wear something comfortable. And, you know, usually we're in business casual, but there is no dress code.
Okay. Any last? Go ahead, Deirdre.
Sorry. So it was my understanding that we wanted to do a handout for Article 9, correct, Doug? Or Pete?
I'm going to do, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Doug and Donna come to some closure on that and I'm going to heed their recommendation. We don't need to vote on it and they know best.
Right. I just want to prepare for Monday, that's all.
Yep. So, Deirdre, if we do do that, when will you need that said handout?
So it would just be, would it be the, the motions, I suppose? I can coordinate, Karen Bray is out tomorrow, Friday, but we just have to make a number of them. And then my other question would be, although the PFAS handout provided by Kleinfelder was provided in the book, should we do another handout for people to look at specifically?
Unless it's additional information, I would say no.
Okay. All right. Great.
And then for the handout from potentially on Article 9 discussion, I do defer to Doug and to Ms. Kabiebo, but there cannot be any contradictory information in, that we're handing out that were already went out potentially in the report. So it, it, it will defeat the purpose of being clarifying if it has information that's different or contrary to what's already been published.
I guess Dawn and I are going to chat on Friday. So I, I'm, I have a couple of different ideas on maybe what should be in that handout. And one, I'll just throw it out to the committee to see what people think. Providing sort of the background of the committee and a little bit about the process in a handout, would that be helpful to sort of get people, set the stage rather than me yapping up there about, you know, 18 months of meetings, about this, that, and the other thing? And, you know, it seems, it seems a couple of short paragraphs just describing the overall process so people understand the broader framework that this fits into might be helpful so that we could really focus on the individual pieces of the article.
Doug, I, I, well, how about we take this offline? I think you and Donna can discuss it and then you can, I'm available, well, I'm not available tomorrow and then I'm available anytime, you know, anytime except for tomorrow. So I can, I'm happy to weigh in on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And then I assume, Deirdre, if it were a one-page handout, that we could make 200 copies of it without going to the printer?
Oh, absolutely. It's just, I thought the entire article was necessary in the handout.
I, no, I don't think that's what we were thinking, that's not what we were, at least that's not what I was thinking.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. All right. I will take a motion.
I move, will you adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Great work.
Deirdre? I've left the, the approved expense sheet here.